Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Today is August 22, 2024, and it is 6:03 PM. So everybody's aware, we will be recording the meeting via Zoom and Facebook. It will be streamed on, and our local access network, which is WCAT6, will also be televising it and re-recording it. If anybody else is recording, please let us know so we can let the rest of the public know for informational purposes. First thing on the agenda, can I please have everybody stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we start, I just want to inform the board, the Selectmen believes we'll be absent tonight and on the 29th.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. And first thing on the agenda is the, well, is a presentation by representatives from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, CMRPC, and the Center for Living and Working Regarding the Town Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, Americans with Disabilities Act 88, state agent. Gentlemen, welcome back.
Thanks for having me.
It's been a little while.
Yeah.
So it looks like you did a lot of work. This is a pretty, pretty thick file here.
It's double-sided, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, it is double-sided. So you guys were busy.
Yeah, just to recap, we've got a planning grant from the Mass Office of Disability to fund our work on this, on CMRPCC. We subcontract with Jim and Mike from the Center for Living and Working. They are going to go through some of the findings of the plan tonight. As you can see, we've done a very thorough job. The positions do well for grant funding moving forward. So we're just talking about the CDBG funds that the town was just awarded, which is great. Imagine that some of the cut-up parts design will improve accessibility improvements. There's also the Mass Office of Disability project grants that will open up in the late spring. I'm happy to help write a program for that as well, take through some of the high priority items that Jim and Michael talked about real good. So again, just thanks for trusting us with it. I'll turn it over to these guys to talk through some of the high-level stuff. And any questions?
Just before we go forward more? Just again, you did very good because you identified who you are and where you work for. So if anybody is going to speak, please state your name for the record and state what company, or if you live in town, where you live, that meets our social media requirements for doing all this. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm just going to do a little brief, and then Mike's going to kick it off. So Jim Mazick, formerly James M. Mazick, ICP Consulting Services, per your request, High Services, Joint Venture, CLW for ADA plans, and we both sub-contract with CMRPCC. So we're going to be able to keep this fairly short, or shorter, tonight because if you start being, you cover all the background stuff, the format, the regulations. So tonight, we're just going to go in, Mike's going to tie both the areas on the self-evaluation that would need some work or improvement, or areas of deficiencies. Then I'm going to go into, after that, talk about general findings across the board with buildings, rec areas, sidewalk, curb ramps, and then we're going to go to maybe four or five buildings and highlight a couple of different areas that we found. So when I get to the full of you, I'll see if you have, you know, 33 and 30 RPM speeds.
And do we have a digital form of this?
Yes, it's on the website.
Sure. So when we're going through, because you're going to go through basically what's in here, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if you could just tell us what page it would be?
Oh.
You don't know that?
No.
Okay.
Well, well.
But it's by topic?
Well, yes. Well, we semi-sort of do the self-evaluation portion. I think it's like 20 pages.
That starts on page 33, the self-evaluation. So Mike's part will start on page 33 of the plan, and like I said, it goes for a number of pages. I'm going to hit generally, because if you go on the plan, it's very specific area building. I'm going to go common areas of non-compliance grow, and then I'm going to go just highlighting even four or five buildings. The municipal building assessments start at page 53, and they go through page 122. So but, so maybe we save that. But, you know, folks can look at the comments to scroll down.
Okay.
All right, so I will. And yeah, so well, first, my name, Mike Kendy, and I am the ADA Accessibility Specialist for the Center for Living and Working, AKA CLW. And just on behalf of all of us here, I just want to thank the town of Warren for having us administer your DEA self-evaluation transition plan. And just want to give a big thank you to all the, all the town staff who were very, very helpful when we were conducting our surveys and interviews, and excellent, everybody from the Liz Building, senior center, Jim Ferrera, all very helpful, and we thank them very much. So I'm just going to go over the highlights of the self-evaluation piece. As Jim said, it starts on page 33, but I'm just going to really skim over, you know, the, like, the 10 different, you know, pieces of it. So first, I'm going to start with commissions on disability. You know, currently, there is not a commission on disability in Warren, nor is there a record of having one. So recommend through town meeting action to establish a commission on disability through NAS federal laws, Chapel Place, Section 8K.
Page 33.
I'll start with five members. You know, there's about 5,000 people in town, so I would, I would hope you'd be able to find, you know, five people to do that. Next, ADA coordinator. The Board of Selecting Secretary, Carrie Dusty, serves as the ADA coordinator, and she's listed as the ADA coordinator on Mass Office on Disabilities website, you know, that identifies the different ADA coordinators. The recommendation there is to, you know, have that applied to be posted on Warren's website and in the Shepherd Memorial Building's building employee. Public notice, you know, the, the Title II of the ADA requires that public entities notify participants of its non-discrimination policy. The town website, I'm sorry, Warren, does, does have a non-discrimination document that refers to equal opportunity modifications to policies and procedures. But, and this document was actually submitted to the Mass Office on Disability when you were applying for the grant to have this ADA plan come to fruition. But that, that's not really posted anywhere on the town's website or in the Shepherd building. So recommendation is to post a non-discrimination document in Warren's website, in the Board of Selecting Town, and/or create an ADA coordinator webpage that will include pertinent ADA documents that I'll be talking about as we go on. Next is ADA grievance procedure. Although Warren has a general grievance procedure for town employees with its personnel bias, it does not appear that it has adopted an ADA grievance procedure as required in the ADA recommendation. An ADA grievance procedure should be adopted and should be made available to all staff, departments, committees, and boards. And we actually have a sample grievance procedure, a appendix C, policies, practices. You know, the, you know, a public entity shall make reasonable modifications of policies, practices, and procedures when the modifications are necessary to avoid discrimination on the basis of disability. So, and it does not appear to be any kind of, you know, reasonable accommodation policy. So again, it's recommended that the town adopt a reasonable accommodation policy and incorporate non-discrimination language, you know, in their job, the job descriptions. But job descriptions should have essential function requirements, physical requirements, you know, and postings and job descriptions. The, yeah, so this kind of segues into reasonable accommodations. And here, the, you know, just looking at the few job descriptions I had available to review, only the fire department EMT job description and the library job description, you know, contained like essential functions, duties, responsibilities, qualifications, you know, et cetera. However, it neither had any kind of reasonable accommodation language. So recommendation is, you know, a job description should have some kind of, you know, statement saying that it's an equal opportunity employer. It does not discriminate on basis of disabilities and will provide reasonable accommodations so they can do essential functions in the job. Maintenance, you know, this is, Jim actually will talk about that, but, you know, in our, while we were doing our ADA plan surveys, you know, we go to study, you know, a lot of, you know, little things that can be addressed easy, you know, items placed in front of dispensers, operational buttons, missing protective equipment, in the sink piping, bathroom doors that don't fully self-close. So, you know, the recommendation there is, you know, any kind of accessibility features should be inspected regularly and to ensure compliance and program accessibility and initiate repairs if there are any effective communications. You know, the, the, you know, towns should pay the need notices and, you know, events that if you need any kind of auxiliary aids, such as assistive, assistive listening devices for people who are high-earr, that, that they should be made available. And when they are available, the public should know about it. So, you know, here, the recommendation is, you know, just add the following to all meeting agendas if you need additional aids and services for effective communications, such as sign language interpreter, assistive listening devices, you know, to contact the ADA coordinator as soon as possible. And, and if Warren doesn't have one already, purchase an assistive listening system that can, you know, be used anywhere, you know, so it'd be, you know, affordable. And be made available at all the, all the, you know, different meetings that may have, excuse me, one second. The, the website, the town Warren's website is accessible for people who rely on, on screen reading software like, you know, JAWS. And one of the reasons for that is the town uses government websites by Civics Plus, and it is a very screen reader friendly software. So, so you guys are good there. Emergency preparedness is, you know, the, James McKee is listed as the Emergency Managing Deputy Director in the 2023 annual report, and Seth Field is listed as a firefight EMT and EMS coordinator on the fire department webpage. Here, it's recommended that, that the guidance provided in Chapter 7 of the ADA plan, that's the front end that Jim was referring to, you know, there's a next chapter on emergency preparedness and the inclusion of people with disabilities in the process. And finally, voting places. In our, my conversation with the town clerk, voting, including early voting, takes place either in the lower level of, either in the lower level or the main first floor of this Charles Shepherd building. And the, you know, both, the, both entrances are accessible. Probably recommend using the lower entrance more often because that way we don't have to, people with mobility disabilities, right, we don't have to depend on that, that scale limit. And the, and the voting polls do have an autolog for the assist struggle that enables people with visual impairments or other types of disabilities that make them unable to use a normal ballot. And insufficient, the autolog is set up in such a way that it's screened, it's not able to be seen by the voting public. So, so that's all good, and that includes my very, very, very high-level overview of the self-evaluation.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And you know, we'll work on those items that were brought up, and we'll see what we can do. You know, we're going to get great money to do those fixes, so.
A lot of these values, if you think of the primary, first, the assistive, the assistance, why did we work on that? Did he marry six, six to 10,000 or something? Is how many years does that stuff, you know, occur?
Yeah. And either Stabro Center for Individual Living or Center for Living and Working, they both have a deaf and high-earrring department, and they're, they will be, they should be able to help assist you in getting assisted living, assistive listening devices. I know, really, if you do that, who Center for Living and Working?
All right, so yeah, I'm going to go through a general overview of some of the commonalities throughout the town. I'm going to start with buildings first, and with the bathrooms and buildings, and rec areas, and sidewalks and curb ramps, and I'm going to go to the four or five buildings as some of the, things are different, and not more than commonalities. So in general, parking, in many cases, signage is too low, maybe no more than 60, I'd say at least 6 inches to the bottom of the sign.
Can you give me a page number as you move through?
These are not going to be page numbers because it was in the whole document.
Okay, all right.
I will give a page number when I go, when you start on individual buildings, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just let me know.
If you go through the report, you mean you'll see, and you're going to see some of these things almost every, what, different variations?
Yeah, okay.
In some cases, signage is too high, maybe no more than 90 inches to the top of the signs. That's a simple fix. Some cases, there is no signage at all. Cross slopes and right slopes can be no more than 2%. In some cases, over, those were exceeded. Some cases, there are no banned accessible parking, and in some cases, no access aisles. Actually, in many cases, no parking at all. Exteriors of travel into buildings, in many cases, there is abrupt changes in level service of one and one-quarter inch. So in that case, it's a better, so it's an easier grade approach into that. Again, we have details in the plan specifically needs to be done. I'm just giving a few words. You'll see exactly what needs to be done. Might be a case in the plan, say, you know, grind so that way, or grind one-quarter inch, so it's going to be at this level. Doors. So doors across the board, this is common in almost all communities, have excessive operating forces, maybe no more than 15 pounds for an exterior door, no more than five pounds for an interior door. In many cases, the door closes, the door is closed too fast. It must take at least six seconds to close. We get a lot of complaints, not complaints, well, yeah, they're paying to us. We go to senior centers, and the seniors, you know, all of these doors are too hard to hold, they're too posted fast, and that's, and that's on the steering. Steer rails, both interior and exterior steer rails. We found that in many cases, the rails are not round or oval in shape. Must be round and oval in shape. If you're not seeing, I think, I think it's two, two and a half inches, I'll let Al it's in the plan in detail. Many cases, they lack top and or wider extensions, 12-inch parallel to the ground or floor at the top, the slope difference of one tread, and then 12 inches parallel to the ground or floor at the bottom. In many cases, the, the rails are too high or too low. There are tolerances that are allowed in these, in when you're looking at something, I think, zero, zero to two inches is one eight-inch tolerance. Two to 30, half, four inches, two to 36 is half an inch, 36 and over is one inch. But if you have a range of dimensions, there's no tolerance. Your tolerance should be in that range. So in stair rails, the range is 34 inches to 38 inches above finish four or above three. So if you're 33 and a half inches, technically you're too low because if you're going to do that variance, you're 38 and a half, technically too high. So we know they're there. Again, if you're outside that range, that's your variance, then you're not compliant. Under the ADA, the maximum stair riser is getting no more than seven inches. Some cases have exceeded, but they also, under both, federal and state, the risers must be uniform throughout. So a lot of times, your exterior risers, you're using granite or concrete, you have a little variation that that's all you're for. Many cases, there was built, tack-built designation signage on doors. I mean, this building is an example, well, pretty much. Or they're at the improper height, or they're not on the latched side of the door. And you see right there, doors, probably throughout this building, have non-compliant, non-style hardware. They must be lever style. Why is that? Because if you have a problem with using your hand grip or to grip, you must still operate a door handle with a closed fist or a loose grip. You can't do them enough. You can't do it with the hand. Refrain for adults, it's 48 inches above finish floor. So in many cases, we saw the lights, which is coal, it's coal hooks. Dispenses, such as the ventilators, there could be fire alarms, we have many things. Sanitizers were too high. Drinking cup, because I know you have, you have some in this building, they work high-low, so drinking cup must be high and low. So option either is get a high and low, or you just continue to use the drinking cup. So no one has a drinking cup. Under the ADA, if there's a glass pane in a door, must be these 43 inches above finish four. So if I'm in a wheelchair that I can visualize, it has to be no more than 43 inches to the bottom of the viewing glass. I should be able to see through if someone's coming, just if it's higher up, that can't, that can't be done. protruding objects, so protruding objects, I'm not seeing here as an example.
You did that one?
Well, yeah, now they're, okay.
Oh, yeah. That's why we put the table there.
Okay, see, there you go. Now it'd be a protruding object. Is anything that's had 27 inches to 80 inches above finish floor, that's protruding more than four inches up, if the accessible roof is a protruding object, so if I'm sighted here, I can't pick it up with cane detection. We're going to put smaller again. In some cases, tables and desks, at insufficient knee height, is 27 inches high, and also insufficient knee depth is 19 inches deep, or clear wood is 30 inches. Service counters, which you have some in this building, have some in the libraries, they can be no more than 36 inches, must finish four. We saw some sort of higher than that. Just as an aside, a food counter is 34 inches, but a service counter is 36. Again, in this building... Again, in this building, also the police station, there are many doorways that didn't have the minimum thirty-two inch clear wood, they were, they were less than that. And again, we have different options for recommendations. I mean, something like the, you know, if it's an office, private office, then you may only need to dress it to reasonable accommodation. Because now all of a sudden you're a chair that's too wide for the doorway, then get out, the wide, but if it's, or you're gonna help the public to meet if someone couldn't get in. But to modify all these old historic buildings, these doorways, maybe not thirty-six inches, would, would cost us a whole fortune. And we recognize, we have that in the report. And in some cases in the doorway threshold, they seat at the maximum height of one quarter inch unbellied, or one quarter inch, half inch beveled. And those are easy fixes on the doorway issues. Bathrooms, generally coat hooks are often, coat hooks are often too high, they can be no more than forty-eight inches. And we're trying to just point out little nuances in these racks. Some of the reach range heights are different in bathrooms than are elsewhere. So, for dispensers, paper towel, sanitizers, soap dispensers in bathrooms, can be no more than forty george's in height above finish floor. But if there is outside of this room, it can be forty-eight. Why is that? I don't know, but that's what the record says. In many cases, sink piping, this is a pretty common problem, was not wrapped, guarded, insulated, protect one, who, and, and the chair, and tie them around themselves. Ground bars, the same thing as I mentioned with the stair rails, there's a, there's a range, thirty-three inches to thirty-six inches above finish four, that's your tolerance. In many cases the ground bars were too high or too low. And also ground bars have a set, a set back from the interior corner, twelve inches from the side ground bar, six inches from the rear ground bar. Many cases the setbacks exceeded that, there are more than twelve inches, more than six inches from, from the interior corner. Trolley paper dispensers were often too far or too close to the front of the water closet. They can be, they must be at least twenty-four inches above finish four on center, they must be seven to nine inches in front of the water closet. So, too close, hard to reach, too far, definitely can't, can't reach. Sign mirrors can be no more than forty inches above finish floor to the bottom of the reflecting surface, not the bottom of the shelf, not the bottom of the frame, but the reflecting surface itself. In bathrooms, they had solid doors, you have some here, you have some, some other buildings. Some of those were, actually, and this is very common, most of those were not self-closing. And most of those lacked both interior and exterior door holes. So, especially if a door is not self-closing, if it doesn't have interior door hole, and I'm, I'm in a wheelchair, the only way I can actually close that door is to have reached out, well, it's kind of wrapped, and marked as a toilet. Water closets, they should be seventeen to nineteen inches to the top of the seat, many cases they were slightly too high. And then the setbacks on the, on the, under water closets, and this is common in many of the buildings, were, were not compliant. So, they need to be eighteen inches on center of the water closet from the near wall, forty-two inches from the firewall, so you have maneuverability to get onto a transfer, and at least forty-two inches in front of, of the toilet. And in some cases too, the flush control was all located on the wide side of the toilet. It needs to be on the approach or the wide side of the toilet, not on the wall or the near side of the toilet. The recreation areas, commonality was pretty much lack of accessibles to travel to and around facilities within that, those rec areas. The Homehold Center Dean Park in Manhattan, Carter Park, had plain heart equipment, and never that was accessible. And there was no routes of travel to and within those areas. Their big case were woodships, and woodships are not an acceptable means of route travel. They may be, I say may, if, if they still have some life left in them, meet the, some of the AST, because two AST, ASTM standards were, were fall zone, they may need that, but if they're put down ten years ago, there's nothing left from them, probably don't need that. And in those areas had wheelchairs, either they lacked a proper twenty-seven inch height and or the nineteen inch depth to be your wheelchair. Sidewalks and curb ramps, we focused on just the war center area, we focused on Route sixty-seven Main Street. General, there are many curb ramps that had excessive main right slopes, you can't exceed eight point three percent, maximum ten percent on clear side. Many of them had no level landings. And I know you've got some terrain issues around, down by the park, but still, I mean, if I'm in a wheelchair, I need to be able to, I can't maneuver if I've got a steep slope, I need to be able to level there, to maneuver and to see it on my way. And then in cases where there's, in many cases the transition from the asphalt road surface to the concrete curb ramp, there was a rough change in level service of half inch to inch, a little bit of briny in the concrete, we necessarily make a nice smooth transition. As you go down to Carter Park and going down to Mobile Station, those signs were, you probably know, were in horrible condition, severe deterioration, heaving, rough changes. There was reduced clear wood through telephone poles, new poles and then cut out, never asphalt replaced, so reducing clear wood to, you know, like twenty-some odd inches, which you need at least thirty-six. And also because of the deteriorated asphalt, reduced the clear wood to less than thirty-six inches required. And in some of there, because of the heaving and sloping, you get, you had cross slopes of over twenty percent, and cross slopes can't exceed more than two percent. So, that was a major section which should be, at some point, you know, with funds availability, if that's, could be, does that state highway have something?
That's what I was gonna say. Some of that is.
Believe it, state highway.
Yeah, that's, the blame is state.
Yep.
And then West Warren, the South Street to Senior Center, we saw a number of areas where folks would place household items on the sidewalk, a little table, bench, and also in commercial traffic, some, well, even some private, which now that reduced the clear wood, to be able to, again, could be a baby carriage, it could be a wheelchair, it could be a walker, we reduced the clear wood so you couldn't get around on that sidewalk. Okay, so I'm gonna go, I'm talking to maybe four or five buildings, not all of them, some things are a little bit different. And this building here, Shepherd Building, so the access, the access to the lift, incline chair, page sixty-four, is a little ramp, the one we, remember we were playing around, it goes up and down, one coming in, it needs to be adjusted because actually the running slope of that is thirty-nine percent. Running slope shouldn't be more than five percent. So, it's really, it's, they're all getting a lot of views with the challenge of pulling yourself to get on it, because it's excessively steep. The other issue is that although an incline stair lift of that type is allowable under certain conditions, which is maybe access to a stage, or if there's absolutely no other alternative within a building, meaning you can't do a lula, you can't do a ramp, you can't do an elevator, then those are deemed as non-compliant. So, technically that is non-compliant, accessible feature, here we go. So, again, Carter, CDVG, I believe you did look at it, that's something, you know, we'll look at in the future, CDVG. At the Senior Center, the curb ramp in the Parkington Building, and according to this, because it is a curb ramp, but that had a very excessive slope, and it's, we're talking seniors, eleven point three percent, and it was no level landing, so, you know, I believe you of that. Also, the ramps into the building have slopes of nine point six to nine point nine percent in the maximum slope, oh, excuse me, not Senior Center, oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Starting seven?
Sixty-eight, yeah.
I think we're on seventy-three now.
Yeah, it's got the photos.
CDI, I just have a shared picture right now. So, the night, yeah, eight point three percent is maximum for a ramp. Now, this is not, this is, this is, Eric, this is, it's, it's in compliance, but it was pointed out to us by the seniors director, and we would agree, because we, we witnessed this, this is more of a really inconvenience, and, and could be a problem. So, the control button for the automatic, it is a simple fix, the automatic door opener is located at the base of the ramp. Push it, and then people go up, it's probably ten feet to the, to the door entrance without zone. And the door closes in six seconds, meets the standard. However, if I'm trailer, and I gotta walk, or I can, and I'm a little slower getting up.
Yeah, you're trying to beat the, the door.
And I'm, now I'm right up there, the door closes. So, I suggest, you know, maybe talk to the company, adjust it for ten seconds, twelve seconds, give it a little more time, you know. Again, it's compliant, but it would, it would, it would make sense.
Or even a second button at the top.
It could be, that's gonna cost you more money. Making a map and adjusting for ten seconds is gonna be minimal cost of anything, it's gonna be underpays.
Yeah.
You know about the Warren Library, there's no accessible for into the building, there's no, it's second level. The bathrooms are wholly non-compliant, maneuverability, reach range heights. There are four grates in, in, in the building which have openings of one inch to four inches, and that is a tripping hazard, somebody who's sight impaired has a cane, has a walker, the maximum opening should be is one and a half inch. So, that even if the building's not accessible for wheelchair users or walkers or whoever, that's still something that should be looked at. There is reduced clear wood between the stacks for maneuverability, and there's also reduced headroom under, on level one, under the stairs. It's, again, headroom is a similar protruding object, it has to be some keys in headroom, and headroom there was sixty-eight to seventy-eight inches, so there's a little, that could be an issue, and yet if I'm, if you're a cop person walking, and I could, you know, fall on my head on the, on the portion of the stairs.
Yeah, that kind of runs into a problem, because the town doesn't own the Warren Library.
The library.
Yeah, it's a private.
It's private.
Company.
The only, well, the issue is, because you do contribute funds to operating, so there is some.
We rent, we rent the building, but we don't own the building, to say, you know, they, they operate out of it, but it's not a town, it's not a town's building.
Well, just, yeah. But you contribute to the operating budget?
Yes.
Yeah.
We pay, yeah.
So, that would be, you know, seller one, make the issue, they hurt themselves, they're gonna.
Yeah, we'll have to figure that out, how that, that works, because, you know, we, the building owners should be dealing with that stuff, you know.
The, the big issue there is, is it's not accessible period.
Right.
So, that's the biggest, and so, that's a whole other, and that's, and.
And I think that's why West Warren is open.
Yes.
Is allow accessibility to, you know, for individuals with difficulties, because the West Warren one is more accessible.
And we had recommended this procedural policy, it's a practice, we've talked about that. West Warren had a couple things that they were minded, and did adjust. I just, I got police station and the, the fire station. So, police station, the protocol accessible entrance, there should, really should be an air phone buzzer, some kind of similar notification button, push for assistance, I think you have something here done at the bottom near, near left here. The landing at that entrance is not level, is it six point eight two?
You got it?
Twenty seven, nine two?
Picture is.
Okay. Anyway, there's a lot of things in here, I just, I'm complaining we're different. The other thing, that use of that entrance, it requires police personnel to actually be available to come down and then unlock the door, and then ask for you up. Unlike if, you know, you or I could just go to the stairs and walk in, and this, and that's kind of a, more of a discriminatory practice, because it's a different standard for one versus the other. Here, this here is assistance, assistance area, and that person could be, you know, have ability limiting issues, person's doing paperwork, desperate, and on the phone, but you can't get in or out of that, there's two ways to enter and out, whether it's like five and a half to six and a half inches, abrupt changes in level, surface step ups into, into that area. And that would be a reasonable accommodation, if something did happen, then, yeah, to be addressed at that time. And some offices have insufficient door pull clearance on the last side of the door, has to be eighteen inches, so if the door is here, and I've got a wall, and then this is the door pulling it out, I don't have enough maneuverability to actually, I'm in a wheelchair, to pull open that door, because I'm gonna be right in front of the door, and then how to get around it? I need eighteen inches at least, so I can be on this side and pull the door in, and scoot in. Main fire station, no, doesn't accessible parking, again, there's issues with the exterior stairs, with the railing, extensions, top and bottom. The entrance is a five inch abrupt change to get into, so technically it's not accessible. But, you know, she said they opened the door, people would. The other issue, and again, this is a tough one to have, we had a similar situation, I think it was in Perfield, had to go through the apparatus space to get to the back offices. And in this case here, I mean, you really have reduced clear wood, because of, you've got the exhaust hoses for the, for the fire equipment, you've got protruding objects, so, I mean, there's not a lot you can do in this, you know, and we have a bigger adopted policy practices, we really need to accompany someone very carefully and maneuver through, because otherwise you don't want them going through and getting this, getting that, cutting themselves. So, you know, again, it's more of an issue, it's a practice, I mean, it's a postings, and that sort of thing to, to help.
So, in short, the police department and the, the fire department are not ADA, ADA compliant?
They're, they're not, no.
Not even close?
No, they're both, they're both, there's a lot of problems.
So, that could be addressed with the new public safety complex?
It would be. I mean, we did look at the town hall, the second level, and then I think was, you know, there's been a narrative for it, I think you probably know all of the issues out there. I didn't talk about some of the other buildings, but these are the ones that probably have more usability for folks, I'm just gonna get to the fundamentals. Much more detailed, more, much more specifics, you know, both on what the items are, and what the, our recommended actions would be, as well as cost, feasibility, timeframe, necessary.
Very good. Yeah, there's a, a lot in here. You guys are very detailed, and we got a lot to go with. And I think a lot of this we can resolve, but then some of it's gonna be resolved with future projects too. Because we are planning a public safety complex, which will address a lot of the police and fire issues within the design, and we'll make sure that we get your input on that too, to make sure that when the final design is being done, that it is compliant for everybody.
One comment, one question, so.
Give a comment first. Well, you just said yes, because we've had some brand new, I think, well, I think it was much, which had, brand new, had, had some issues which would have been avoided, and had to get, get into the building. Well, I'm curious, where's the location? How we looking at it?
We're still identifying that right now. Because real estate is a little difficult, because it's a very unique type of building, and we need road access to it, and enough land to be able to put a facility that size on it, along with being able to move the larger vehicles for fire, fire vehicles through the area. So, we're trying to find something that's within the town, being close to the center of the town, to be able to do something like that. And we like to have it between the two towns, because we have West Warren and Warren. So, there's a lot of things that we're trying to take into consideration to do that. And we have some ideas, and we're looking at some things, but right now, we're in a feasibility study for the public safety complex, and that's one of the things, is identifying the site.
There was, I worked on a project a few years ago about animal control facility, they were thinking about.
Yeah, that, that went away.
Yeah, no, but the, the sighting, I remember there were a few options that the designer rode out, the size on, at least, it might be helpful to that.
Yeah, those sites wouldn't be for public safety, yeah, because it's too small. We did look at one of those sites over by the highway department, where was the proposed site for the facility.
Yeah.
But it just wasn't working out well.
Yeah, you'd have to get the vehicles.
Yeah, so, and they would take a significant amount of clearing of land in moving dirt to be able to get, because again, you have to be able to get the, the vehicles in there, so. But we're, we're working it. We're trying to do our best. People do not understand the com, complex issues that come from something like this. It's not like you just say, oh, let's build it over there, and then put it there, because it might not work there, and after you invested millions of dollars into a building, that's not gonna work for you.
Well, plus twenty years, so maybe the fire group might be eight inches higher, your doors are at a certain height, you're gonna, so it's gonna be.
That's the problem, we have to order smaller fire equipment to fit in to our current phase. So, it actually costs us more to buy the equipment, to put it, to custom fit it into our building now, where we could just get standard apparatus, if we had the properly sized building for it. And just like you said, inside the building, it's very narrow getting in between those vehicles and stuff, so it's, when, I'm not surprised that it's not ADA compliant, and it's not that we didn't want it to be compliant, it's just, we, we, there's no room.
You had to, yeah. Back years ago, they were vending and all that stuff.
Times change.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gonna?
I'm, I'm good, I just, you know, here's a resource when these right opportunities come up. It should go into some of that.
Very good. Do you have any questions?
I do not.
I do not.
No? Okay, I have no questions. Do you have any questions, Mr. Ferrara?
No, I'd just like to thank CMRPC and Jim and Mike for their help and, and support in this project. I know it was a time crunch, because this grant came out late, and you guys were able to, uh, fit us in and get this done, um, within the amount of time. And we were able to get our reimbursement in from the state on the grant. So, thank you very much for, for meeting within that time crunch, because it was tight. It was a tight schedule.
Very important, because we do have a lot of people in our community with, you know, special needs. And, you know, I, I have friends that are, live in the community that are deaf, and these things would help them. And, you know, we wanna be accessible to everybody, and we appreciate everything you guys are doing too. So, it is important, and as you seen with the chairlift.
Yep.
We have some-
Fingers crossed.
We have some things to fix here, and, you know, even though we have inspected and tested, and maybe we're not having it done often enough, and maybe the equipment is aged to, to be changed out, because it is kind of difficult to operate. It took four of us to be able to operate that, for five, five of us to operate it, to get it to work, so.
No, I remember, uh, over twenty years ago, uh, uh, with, uh, when Chris Dumpy was, uh, in town from, uh, 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 I think, Valley Planning Commission. Uh, and Senator Fuller working, uh, you know, did your ADA plan. I remember, uh, coming here because I was starting to cut my teeth-
Yeah.
Into this kind of work, and, and it's like, you know, it was quite the, uh, quite the experience.
Yeah, we probably didn't have anything then, at all.
No, no, I swear it was the same.
It was the same lift?
I felt like I was on a Disney ride or something like that.
Oh.
Like a little world, uh, you know, whatever.
Oh. Thank you. Um, I have nothing else. Anybody from the public have any questions? About anything going on? No? No, anybody on Zoom have any questions?
Doesn't look like anybody on Zoom.
No? All right. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Very detailed presentation, and thank you very much. Good work.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, thanks, Mike, thanks, Connor.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is discussion and possible vote to allow the town administrator to sign both payroll and accounts payable warrants, anticipated vote. Okay, Mr. Ferrara, you did some research on this with Attorney Blake?
Yep, uh, Karen had come to me and, and said that the, the board wanted to move in this direction. Um, I wanted to check with, um, with Jeff Blake, uh, to see if I could legally do it. Um, and according to his research, it can be done. Uh, the motion is provided, um, if the board so chooses, uh, to move in that direction, um, and can revoke it, um, you know, at any time.
Okay. Um, have there been any issues with the selectmen signing it, and not being able to get it signed and put in at any time?
Not that I'm aware of, I mean, I, I, I did notice that there's some, um, you know, errors that I've picked up, because I, I look at it every week, um, that, um, you know, needed to be corrected. Um, uh, you know, I, I think it's more or less along the lines of, of, you know, the logistics of, of making sure that it, you know, gets submitted to, uh, to the treasurer, uh, so that she can release payroll on Thursday, and that the vendor checks can be done. Um, I think it's more of a logistical, um, thing of just trying to, to get that taken care of.
Okay. Do you have any questions, sir?
No, I'm-
What's your thoughts, what's your thoughts on it?
Let's do it.
You're good with it?
Yeah.
Okay, because I thought we voted on this in the past, and we voted to keep it, and with the selectmen, because we didn't wanna switch over too much.
No, I don't remember doing that, but I'm, I'm all in favor. I mean, I trust Jim, I think Jim's more thorough.
I think he's proven some of the years, and all he's doing is signing things.
Coming through here at nine thirty at night after, you know, whatever, and I just come in and sign, and, you know, it's... I would rather have Jim go through it and sign it.
Okay. All right. I have no objection to it, I, I'm good.
All right.
You wanna do a motion?
So I'll make a motion to delegate the authority of the board pursuant to GL Chapter forty-one, Section fifty-six, to sign all warrants for the payment of town expenses to the town administrator until such time as the board votes to revoke said authority.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes. You all set, Mr. Ferrara? Okay, next thing on the agenda, presentation by Chief Mallett on the May, June, and July Police Department Reports. Chief!
Chief Mallett, welcome to the team. Nice to meet you. Glad to be back.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you, nice to be seeing you. All right, for May. Be logged, eleven hundred sixty-four calls. Missed eight, one felony, had eighty-one incident reports. Two armed youth arrests, three warrant arrests, thirty-two summoner arrests, record thirty-seven. Predicted casualties, four juvenile arrests, one hundred and seventy-five low vehicle stocks, and one hundred and sixty. Gosh, broke this so long ago, I don't even know where I'm at.
All the stuff you've done?
First of all, I met with Superintendent Duck. Uh, School Safety Chair at Barrett Urban, and Fire Chief Wood, to go through and make changes to the school safety plan. All changes were made, we brought the board to the full committee for review and vote. On the second, the entire living committee met and discussed the plans with the board. Discussing voted on, paid, submitted, inspected, and passed. It's been a little fun, and obviously you probably are seeing. Uh, third, I attended a job task force meeting at South River Police Department. Also at this meeting, the district attorney presented task force with a check for five thousand dollars. Uh, also in the third, officers Leslie, my recent visitor, attended CPR first, he was on the train. On the seventh, Officer Williams and I, the fire academy classes, both in regards to period law enforcement. During the day, I attended my monthly, my monthly security month meeting. On the eighth, I attended the master chief's police meeting training. Uh, this meeting legal updates were reviewed, the A's officer, the trade and legislative updates were given. On the sixteenth, I attended an act shooter preparedness class, and attended a grant, whether or not, for a highway safety grant. On the seventeenth, I attended a presentation by a motivational speaker, ex bring beret, break studie, and medical scholarship. On the twenty-third, the Warren Fire and Warren Police, ended up the lock crash with a Quaybog, soon attended the prom. This is strange for me, and they said, no, they won't back the school, I believe.
Yeah.
On the twenty-sixth, I'm proud to say that every member of the Warren Police Department attended the department's Royal Day Parade.
Very good.
Oh, did you? In June, the, the department logged twelve hundred ninety-eight calls. Missed eight, seven felonies, seven juvenile reports, three armed youth arrests, three warrant arrests, thirty-nine summoner arrests, record forty-five, zero protected casualties, one juvenile arrest, one hundred and ninety-eight low vehicle stocks, and one hundred and twenty-two citations.
Busy in June.
Yeah. Uh, the June, the stations have their carpets and the tile floors cleaned, um, by private cleaning. On the fourth, I attended my local experience. Uh, fifth, I met with the male town's public health collaborator in regards to the public in Warren. This collaborator serves the towns level, all north of Warren, and West Brookfield. Uh, I believe this is the one through the fourth part.
Yeah.
On the eighth, I was happy to attend the Quaybog Regional twenty-twenty-four commencement ceremony. Congratulations to all graduates. On the eleventh, we hosted a meet greet with all of the members of the Warren Police Department. Liked freshmen talking to students. Also on the eleventh, our new lieutenant, Kyle, come started his new role here at department. We'll wish him luck in lieutenant become, to the heart. On the twelfth, I attended that essential master chief's police meeting. On the thirteenth, the town conducted its annual meeting. I was taking all residents who had been in recognition of the department's need for additional full-time member. Um, throughout the month of June, uh, yearly reviews were conducted on all members of the department, and all members also went through the second round of fire inspection. In July, in July, the department logged seventeen hundred ten calls, was a lot of calls. Missed eight, five felonies, had fifty-one incident reports, five armed youth arrests, one warrant arrest, twenty-nine summons, record thirty-five, zero protected casualties, two juvenile arrests, one hundred and ninety-eight low vehicle stocks, and one hundred and ten citations. And, obviously, this month I didn't have anything, because, uh, I was automatically since the end of June. Uh, but I do wanna thank a bunch of people, especially before Jim checked on me. Uh, it was a rough time for me and my family, you guys were great. Um, my guys, what can I say, when they, they stepped up. Uh, Lieutenant Dumb was thrown right in the fire.
Yeah, he sure was.
He came out, everyone, everyone stepped up, they were continuing checking on me, seeing how I was doing. Uh, it was great to know that I was missed, and glad to be back. Um, that was not a good time that I went through, uh, but I'm glad to be back here, and all that was missed. My wife and my daughter over there every day when I was in the hospital, and, uh, geez, I don't even know how she, oh, she got attached with everyone when I went down, so. It was, it's nice to be back, and back on my feet.
It's great to have you back, Chief, we're happy you made it through it.
Yeah.
We look forward to all the good things you're gonna continue with.
I appreciate it.
And thank God you had Kyle in place, so something like that happens, you had somebody in charge that can step right up and fill your shoes where you were gone for a little bit, till you get better.
Yeah, they did an amazing job.
So, he did good, we're very happy to have him, he did good. You know, you know, I would definitely give him a good kudos, you know, from all of us too, because we're happy with everything that happened, but it's better to have you back now.
I appreciate that.
He's not replacing you anytime, Chief.
Nice to be one.
So, great job.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chief. Um, you have any questions for the Chief?
I do not.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Okay, next thing on the agenda is presentation by James Keen on the July Emergency Management Report. How you doing, Jim?
Good, good, good evening, I'm James Keen, emergency manager director. My, uh, July, uh, report. July, uh, start of month, July third, lengthy time at Perfield, uh, signed one line tower, for a couple of these. There's operation, and we're trying to clear it. Last three years they've used those, using what I had to share. Uh, July fifth, uh, concert at Key Park, um, our, uh, cert, gee, our cars and stuff. Uh, July seventh, uh, the Warren Cyber Fest. July twelfth, our third concert series, um, the back bowl, touch truck. It was a pretty, we had, we had vehicles, three or four rows of, you know, equipment, fire trucks. Uh, we also had our emergency trailer there, displayed, um, six members helped out. I also had a couple people, sharp knife lead, um, my, uh, cert here now, kind of experienced with the operation at the park. I oversee them a lot.
So Alan, Alan got promoted?
Yes.
Very good.
Yeah.
Alan's a great guy.
July, and the next, yeah, next day, actually, July thirteen, uh, up the service with one of their road races. Um, they have a couple of year, help, help, walking intersections, uh, making sure the numbers are safe. July nineteenth was our fourth concert, the fourth concert of the series. Uh, that consisted of a car show, um, we had, uh, five members up. Did a great job, well. Uh, the final concert was a vendor dinner. Probably had about thirty vendors, um, resists the park. Also throughout the month, uh, practicing, uh, drone, monitoring areas. What it means to that, it's new. On the twenty-fourth, I attended a court, the summer heat, uh, meeting at the water. They helped out.
Very good. Did he crash, you didn't crash the drone, did you?
Nope, nope.
Very good.
Or lose it.
Yeah, lose it, lose it on the roof somewhere.
Stratosphere.
Yeah, going up and down, over the side to side, it's a little bit fast. Over the parking lot.
Very useful to have though, right?
Yes.
Very good. And the light tower is definitely coming to some use.
Yep. We use it at our, actually, we use it at our, uh, vendor fair too. I, I run, um, a couple times a month to keep it up and running. Hopefully someday it's a, a place to park, so it could cover. We had a cover for it, but it, uh, it kinda blew away, it was, it was a high school, so, so we're working on that.
Maybe get something built for some of that equipment that pocket underneath there. Because when the snow comes, it'll be real difficult trying to clean snow and stuff off of it.
Especially if it's frozen to ground.
Especially if it's an emergency and you need to get it out of there. So, all right. Very good, good job. Anything else, sir?
Uh, one other thing, I was thinking of, uh, with this entrance here, putting a little, uh, type of, like, safety vision. Uh, I don't know, you got, you gave me something along-
Inside or outside?
Inside, as you walk in, you're, uh, right side, and something small.
I know there's a bunch over there too.
Yeah, well, it's gotta be right at the bottom of the stairs.
I'm good with it.
So, probably.
Yeah.
I know there's another, uh, section over by the back hallway that wanna help, that has safety stuff. You guys people, when I go that far, you see something, you know, yeah. Just, in time.
You're good with it?
All right.
Anything else, sir? Anything else?
That's all I got for now.
Thank you. No.
Mr. Ferrara?
Nope.
Very good, thanks, Chair. Good job. And I got another person say that you're the hardest working man in the town.
Yeah, I got you.
They just told me that today, and I'm like, yep. All right, next thing on the agenda is discussion and possible appointment of Karen Dusty to the Conservation Commission for a one-year term, anticipated vote. Okay. Um, do you have any questions about it? She wants to join the conservation? I have no problem with it.
Yeah, they need people.
They need people.
That's fine.
I'm good.
She probably doesn't-
Anything, Mr. Ferrara?
No, she's just not required to be a special municipal employee, we checked into that. Uh, she did fly, file a disclosure in the selectmen's office as required under the state ethics law, so that has been filed, it's in the office. Um, she's met all the requirements if the board would like to appoint her, they certainly can.
Absolutely, all right, thank you, sir. All right, you make a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Karen Dusty to the Conservation Commission for a one-year term.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next thing, discussion and possible vote on partnering with the town of Westbrookfield about bringing in Chris Heron to bring awareness about the struggles of addiction by having a discussion with the students of Quaybog Regional Middle and High School, and using a portion of the opioid settlement funds to cover the expense, anticipated vote. So I watched his videos, I looked at his site, and his videos are very powerful. He's a man that has experienced and gone through addiction. He was a Celtics player, and he lost everything because of heroin. He was one of the top point guards, uh, in the country, and he got hooked on heroin when he was very young, and everything fell- when he was very young, and everything fell apart for him. And he, he not only talks about his experiences with dealing with the drugs and getting involved, and how he got involved with it. Uh, he also talks about how he was able to get away from it.
Hmm.
And the challenges afterwards. And he talks about it as, you know, from his life experiences and what he's seen and what he's done. And it is very powerful. I actually teared up quite a bit when I was watching his videos. I'm like, "Wow." You know, and the way he was getting emotional with the kids, and the kids that were there. It was very, the kids were very touched by what he was saying and took it to heart.
Hmm.
It was very powerful speeches, so I, I think it would be great.
Yeah.
If we could save just one kid from ever doing it.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
It's, it's worth it. And, you know, if, if we can do that, we've done our job, and I think it's worth doing this. I, I don't know if you have any questions, because I was gonna ask, Chief, do you know anything about him or anything?
I, actually, Jim was telling me a lot of this afternoon, so that's my stuff.
I'm actually reading about him right now.
Yeah, watch his videos. You get YouTube videos and stuff, and you're like, "Wow."
I think probably when we got this settlement money, six months ago?
Oh, it's been about a year now.
A year. It's like, what do we do with this, right?
Right.
Well, I mean, this is, this is a great thing.
Prevention.
Yeah.
And he, he, you watch the stuff, and you watch the way he... These kids come up bawling their eyes out to him because they've experienced stuff.
Yeah.
And they just needed somebody to talk to and see somebody that can relate to him.
Yeah.
And, you know, relate to them. And this guy relates. He, he was eighteen years old, and he was playing for the Celtics, and top of his game, and every, lost everything.
Yeah.
Because of heroin. So, and, but he came back, and he's doing great. Last video I seen, he, he was talking about his fifteen-year chip. He was saying, "I have no Celtic stuff. I have no basketball merchandise. I have nothing in my house. The one thing I have of value is my fifteen sobriety, fifteen-year sobriety chip."
Hmm.
And it's like, "Wow." That's the most important thing to him.
Yeah. So would this be, what grades or age ranges do we know, or is that to be determined?
I had a meeting today with Superintendent Duff and Ron San Angelo from West Brookfield, their town administrator, um, and the goal is to try to get this in the gym, um, at Quabog, and to have, um, audio/video equipment accessible, to have, uh, as many seats as possible there because, uh, the superintendent would really like to maximize, uh, the benefit to not only just the high school students, but to middle school students as well, um, so that we would bring all of the, um, uh, age groups in from middle to high to listen to this, um, speaker. Um, and, you know, there's a possibility that, obviously, um, you know, they could, you know, invite their parents as well, so the parents could, you know, potentially hear, you know, some of the things to, you know, be mindful of and, and look for as well. Um, there's a possibility of that as well, depending on, you know, the seating. But if we, if we're restricted to the auditorium, then, uh, the superintendent would have to only limit it to, to high school students, where, you know, he's gonna know in a few days to whether or not he can put it in the gym, um, and he's hopeful that he can. Um, we're looking at, because this gentleman is so booked out, the earliest that he could potentially do this would be in December, um, and so, um...
It's actually a good time to do it, because that's when people really need help around the holidays.
Yeah. So, um, we do have a, um, Ron, uh, San Angelo has, um, you know, worked with this, um, you know, this gentleman in other communities. He's brought him to, um, to other school districts that he, uh, served in, um, and he thought he was very powerful, and he, um, you know, floated the idea, uh, to me, and I, I said, "Well, let me check with my board, and let me see, let me talk to the superintendent, talk to the police chief, via chief, you know, let's, let's have a discussion about it, and then I'll let me get back to him." Um, we have approximately a little over sixteen thousand dollars in settlement money that we've gotten so far. Uh, I have enrolled, enrolled us in all the possible settlements that, that are available, uh, that we'll take advantage of. Um, and so, some settlements are, are, are different than others. Some we get an upfront, a, a lot of money right upfront, and some it's over small amounts over a, a period of extended period of time, depending on the settlement agreement. Um, this would qualify, uh, for the use of those. Those funds are, are restricted to, um, to be used for, um, addiction, opiate addiction. Um, you know, some type of, um, um, you know, you know, you know, preventative, um, um, campaign, or some type of, um, um, awareness. Um, you know, uh, this could be used for that, so that the funds would cover the expense of that. And you're looking at, um, you know, uh, Ron had indicated to me today that, 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 uh, West Brookfield would be willing to pay for half of, of the cost, and so it would be approximately twenty-six hundred dollars per, um, per community. Um, so, um, if the board is willing...
Plenty of money to do it.
Yeah.
We actually have a, he has a short video in the email that he, Mr. Farrar sent to you. If you wanna play that, it's just like two minutes long. If you wanna play that. It's actually pretty good. I gotta find that email. Yep. Put this one here? That's the website. Is the other link, uh...
Yeah, that should be...
The other link, the, the video, or...
Yeah, yeah.
So that's his video?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Bottom of the page, is it? There's a couple videos there, Chair.
There's one, the intro. Which one is that?
Do you know? It's one of those videos.
Maybe this one? Yeah, just play it.
All right, let me...
Get, get the gist of what it is. Uh, screen is fine. This one. Yeah, that's two minutes. Um, hmm. I don't know where that sound is coming. Can you turn it up with the, is it turned all the way down on the TV? TV? No. Oh, there it goes.
We have to make it less accessible. Seven of my best friends in high school turned into heroin addicts. We all started with a mom and a living, drinking her beer. We all started off, you know, asking some adult to walk into a liquor store and get it for us. And we all began there. I think, as parents, we need to make it harder for our children. We have to make it less accessible. I believe when it comes to addiction, people are, people are prepared to stand in front of children. Over the last seven years, I've dedicated most of my life to traveling the country, sharing my story, and over the last four and a half years, I've shifted it more towards prevention. I, I just think as a culture in general, we've accepted kids getting drunk on Friday nights. We hover over our children's grades. We stand on the sidelines. But on a Friday and Saturday night, it's our weekend. It's not theirs anymore. Well, first and foremost, we don't ask our kids why. You know, when a kid comes home drunk on a Friday night, the first question is, "Who were you with, and where were you?" You know, "What were you doing?" And nobody asks why. And why is the only one that really matters at the end of the day? Kids need to be challenged socially and checked in on emotion. We don't do enough. I think prevention starts with all, not just, I think it starts with all of us. You know, it begins and, and ends with a community.
So, yeah, all right. He gets into, with, when he's talking to the kids, and it actually gets very emotional. You really feel for the kids. You feel for him, and you see how they respond to it. And it's very powerful.
Hmm.
So, I, I think it would be great to do.
Yeah.
You know. Chief, what are your thoughts?
For the opioid market.
Yeah.
Jim?
Same, yeah, in, in a school setting.
Great. You have anything to say?
Uh, no, I'm glad you had the discussion. You know, it fits the parameters. It's... I was afraid you were gonna say it was all fifteen thousand or sixteen thousand, but, um...
No, we could do a few of these.
It'd be good to do that, and especially if there could be any kind of, uh, follow-through with that, any, you know, because at one time, it'll have a great impact, but that impact will, a lot of it'll be, you know, it'll deteriorate relatively quickly in, over, over just a couple days, weeks, maybe, kind of thing. So just to, you know, we should pay attention to other, you know, continuing efforts if we've got the money available to us.
Think it starts the conversation and brings it out there.
Yeah, no, it sounds, sounds like it, it... Yeah. Sounds good.
So I would ask if, I don't know if you know of homeschool families or kids in town who go to private schools?
Okay.
I mean, I think it's for the town, so it...
Sure.
Should be, extend beyond Quabog students.
Okay.
To all the students in the town, no matter what.
Sure.
You know, vehicle they use to get education.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we can certainly, uh, you know, put it out there.
Yeah.
Um, and let me work with the superintendent on how to, you know, handle that logistically in, in terms of the access to the gym and stuff like that.
Yeah, I guess that'll be the big deciding factor.
And, um, it's gonna be recorded, or hopefully be recorded by C, CAT six, too? Because, you know, that could be something that, you know, they could put on their site, too, the school, and show how this, this guy was here, this guy was talking, and let's continue the conversation. Not just let, have it be one day, but let's look at it as a whole and a beginning of where we need to address this in further prevention. What else do we need to do beyond having the conversation? And I know there's, there's a lot we can do, and it's hard because it's getting more and more frequent. Um, fentanyl, heroin, it's getting way too common, especially in small towns, so, yeah.
They were looking at the date of December eleventh.
Okay.
What day is that?
It's a Wednesday.
All right.
Could you just, just follow on that comment?
Yeah, could you explicitly ask if we can record it and re-show it?
Yep.
Because that...
Yeah, there may be copyright issues.
There may be, yeah, just, just address that detail.
I will check on that.
Absolutely.
Did it seem like it was gonna be a school day event thing?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Or like after?
No, we, it's during the school day.
Start the school day?
It'd be right after lunch.
All right.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Nope.
Anybody from the public have any questions? Questions, concerns about this?
No, there ain't. No one's there.
No one's even in there. Okay.
Please just leave it on, okay?
Oh, is that Derek?
Derek.
Derek, you good with it?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
We could.
I don't know, I don't know if he could hear us.
I don't know.
Yeah, I can hear you, but you can't hear me. That's okay. Don't worry.
You?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So, yeah, let's do it.
So, let's see, how are we reading this? Okay, so I'll make a motion to use, um, funds from the opioid settlement to partner with the town of West Brookfield to bring Chris Heron, um, to do a presentation about addiction to the, uh, students of Warren, Quabog Middle and High School.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll check into that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Warrants and bills? Did you wanna read them, Tim?
Rich, come on, uh...
Oh, sure.
I got the, uh, there's a, there's a sheet in here. Want to hand this to...
I got it right here.
Okay, you got one?
That one?
All right.
Is that the one you got?
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to see because the sewer, the sewer bill, it looks a little, it looks a little different than it was on the paper there. Just clarify the sewer bill.
Six thirty?
Yeah. Yeah, but, uh, on the, on the, on the agenda, it says six fifty.
It does, instead of six thirty.
Okay.
So I don't know what the bill, just look in the, in the, in the red folder, David, if you could, to see what the bill is actually.
You always gotta check these.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay.
Yep, six thirty. So here's, here's your copy.
Okay, thank you.
Verizon. Four fourteen.
All the other ones look good.
Yeah. And it's four fourteen because we're splitting it because the actual bill says one thousand thirty-seven eighty-five.
Right, right, right.
But we're dividing that off.
Yeah, there's a few bills that end up like that. Hey, ready?
You got it?
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. PR zero seven, fifty-three thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty cents. And AP oh six, four hundred thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following bills. Cooley Dickinson Medical Group, two fifty. Weston and Sampson, eleven thousand, one hundred seventy. Merrick O'Connell, six thousand, one hundred and fifty. Town of Warren Sewer, six hundred and thirty dollars. Verizon, four hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents. WB Mason, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Marlin Leasing, twelve hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Entree Technologies, twenty-five hundred, ninety-six dollars and ten cents. American Towers, twenty-two hundred eighty-eight dollars.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the town administrator report. Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a brief report, uh, this evening, uh, for the board. Um, this week I met with, uh, along with the treasurer, uh, we met with Maya, um, on our, uh, health insurance, uh, renewal for our retirees. Uh, we, we currently have eleven retirees on the plan, um, and, uh, health insurance premiums and costs, whether it be the, um, the insurance or the medex, um, you know, which covers the prescription, is on the rise, um, and it's on the rise for many communities. And so, one of the things that I had asked, uh, Maya about, um, because they're, they're anticipating us, uh, a, an increase on the medex side, um, you know, there's been some communities that, 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 that partner, uh, on the medex side, um, to another, you know, solution. Uh, does Maya allow you to break out the medex? Does Maya allow you to break out the medex and go to another, you know, provider, and they don't? Unfortunately, they don't. You know, there's, there's some communities that are, are, are more aggressive with, you know, getting some of the prescription drugs for the retirees on the medex side from the Canadian markets. And, and they've been very successful with, you know, saving on a lot of money for the cost and still being able to get, you know, the, you know, the, the name brand products. But it's something that we're gonna have to watch and monitor. So we had our summer meeting and we are gonna continue to monitor our, 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 our costs. We currently still only have eleven retirees on the plan. It is a small plan, but for, for, you know, other communities that, that may have a few hundred on a plan, you know, it's something that we still have to watch and, and monitor. Because, you know, even though it's a small number, still can, you know, provide some challenges for the budget in the future.
Do we have a percentage that it's going up?
That, it has not been released yet, it has not been released, you know. Our renewal is, is, is not until, you know, October-ish. And so we'll, we'll know. In general, G I C rates increase anywhere between eight and eleven percent, average being nine point two percent on the medex side. So, you know, it, it, you know, these are
Pretty significant.
Serious costs
Yeah.
for, for health insurance and for medics on the, on the retiree plan. So we have to just keep an eye on that and, and monitor that and do our due diligence, which we will. There are some grants that are out there. There's the risk management grant from Maya that I plan on submitting a, an application in for. I'm going to be working with a couple of different departments to see what some of the needs are, to identify some of the, you know, criteria, you know, that they're really looking for to be successful for a grant, whether it be the sewer or the highway department. I will certainly be looking and working with both departments to see if they have any needs for any of the criteria that they're working on for this year, fiscal year twenty five. This week, we had our C D A C meeting, but prior to the C D A C meeting, I met with John O'Leary, our planning partner at, at the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission put out an R F P for the Town Common Improvement Project. And they sent out the request for qualifications and we only had one respondent. And so we are evaluating the respondent. That respondent was Weston and Sampson. And the evaluation is currently underway. And I've asked for Parks to be involved in, in, in reviewing the, the response. I think, Rich, are, are, did you get a packet?
I have one, yeah.
You have one? I believe Jeremy has one and I have one. And we'll be evaluating what has been submitted. It hasn't been, nothing has been awarded by any means to anybody. And so we're gonna be doing an evaluation on that and we'll be working on, on that process. This week I also had a department head meeting. We went over several things within the department head meeting. We went over the, from the new phone system to the new I T provider and service tickets. We went over the new report or operational report that I'm going to be providing. And I've already provided my first one for the month of July to the Board of Selectment every month. And I've asked departments to also help me and assist with, you know, some updates that they're going to be working on within their department that I may not be aware of, that they're working on to improve their services or improve their departments that I can incorporate into, into the report to the board. And so they're gonna be providing me with, you know, two to three bullet points of, of things. I'm not looking for paragraphs and trying to take time away from departments, just two or three bullet points that you've been working on in your department, that you wanna showcase for the month, that we can give to the Board of Selectment so that they, so that the board knows exactly how departments are operating. And again, and it proves that communication flow throughout the town and let the public know, too. So I've asked departments to get me those bullets by the last Thursday of every month so that the first Thursday of the month, my report can be given to you. And you will have it and it will be on the website as well for the public to have it. We are, I am working with the financial departments to get the financial report piece. It's a little bit more technical in nature and we should be wrapping that up very soon. I am working also on the M O U between the, the officer, Officer Pfister and the Comfort Dog in the town. We are currently reviewing that. I, I will have to engage with town council just a little bit on it to have them take a look at the final product and go through it for the legality aspect of it. And then also this week, we have been working on addressing some of the needs in the exterior of the building with our new custodian. I, I've had him take a look at some of the, the posting boards out here to try to, you know, get them cleaned on a more regular basis and, you know, and have the glass cleaned on more regular basis. Make sure the cobwebs are cleaned off of there. Make sure that, uh, uh, along the side of the building, that there has been some weeds that are growing, you know, right against the, the building, making sure the weeds are gone, making sure it's clean, crisp. When you, when you walk, you know, when you, when you look at the side of the building as you're coming in, he's working on some of those things. He had mentioned to me that he's, he's already identified some stuff in, in, in this building that is some additional just junk that's sitting around, whether it's, you know, pieces of chairs that, that, that don't work anymore or, 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 or pieces of equipment that's not put together. You know, there's, he's identified a few different things. And he feels as though with this building and with some of the stuff that's over at the police station, that there is a need for a dumpster and that he would coordinate the dumpster to, to get disposed of and, and, and empty out some of these additional storage areas and, and areas so that we can come a little less light. That's something that the board may wanna consider next month, you know, before the snow starts to fly, that we can get some of this stuff done as a fall cleanout. And obviously, we're working on, you know, some of the vacancies that we have here in town. Our, our planning board had to cancel their meeting today, but, you know, we had an informal, you know, not a quorum, but an informal get together to review second round applicants today. And we feel as though that after I go through and, and, and call some of the references and do some checks, that we're hopeful that a decision can be, can be made by next week sometime on the position. We have some, some great finalists there that have some municipal experience. So we're, we're, we're really pleased with that. I'm also working with the sewer department. There's a vacancy at the sewer department and that has been posted. We're working to fill that, we have one interview set for next week already. I have an interview set tomorrow at ten thirty and eleven for the van driver and van driver slash custodian at the senior center. So we have two interviews tomorrow morning, starting at ten thirty and eleven at the senior center for that position. We just recently posted a, a vacancy, I was notified this week, a vacancy in the fire department. We had a resignation in the fire department, that will be on our agenda for next, next week. But that, that position has already been posted and it's on our website, it's in the newspaper this week. And we are, it will be closing the beginning of September, I believe September sixth is when it will be closing. So if anybody's interested in serving in our, our grave fire department, please submit your resume and cover letter to the chief. Get that over to him in a timely manner, it's posted on the website, it's on Indeed. We also had an interview this week for our police officer position. This position is a new position that was created at town meeting. And we're working through that. And hopefully we'll have some information to report back to the board shortly on that. But it's been a busy week with, whether it be H R stuff, stuff that we're working on with grants. I did submit this week, right when it came out on the nineteenth, two grants to the state, one for twenty five thousand dollars, the other for twenty thousand dollars. The twenty five thousand dollar grant was a community compact best practices grant. And that is to have us get and develop a employee manual that we desperately need. We have a personal bylaw, but we don't have an employee manual on policies and procedures. And there's, there's the Collins Center that's out there that does that, as well as a few other folks that, 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 that can come in and help and, and, and write it. It's, it's, it's a long process. You know, there's, you know, there's grant money available. If the state's willing to pay for this, then that's great. The town should take advantage of it. The other grant that I applied for was a twenty thousand dollar grant. And that was to, to cover the cost for our compensation wage study plan that we're looking to get renewed for next year. This, the study, again, would be also done by the Collins Center. And if we can, you know, have funds available from the state as opposing to using our own money, I think that's, that's, that's a great thing to do. So that's forty five thousand dollars out there in, in grant money that was applied for this week. I'm hoping that we will hear back from them soon. We should also be hearing relatively soon on the Green Communities Grant that I worked with on, with C M R P C and with our energy audit people. And that's a two hundred thousand dollar grant. So we should be hearing on the Green Communities stuff not too, not too far off, maybe in another, you know, two to three weeks, hopefully.
Very good. Anything else, sir?
No.
That's quite a bit, I thought you said it was gonna be short.
Wait till you hear the longer.
I know. Can you get more detail? Well, very good, great job, sir, thank you very much. Um, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Very good. All right, do we have any new business?
Nope.
No new business? Okay. Any old business?
No.
Painting lines?
I did have a conversation with Jeremy today about painting lines. And he is going to try to get chapter ninety to pay for some of the painting lines. He says unfortunately, he can't do it in-house. And he needs to have a professional do it. And he's, he's trying to contract out and to try to see if chapter ninety will pay for that. I did have a conversation with him today about that.
Okay.
Yeah, because we resurfaced the roads and we took away the lines. We gotta put them back now.
Right.
So. Can't think of any other old business. Correspondence, we had the Warren in Westbrookfield Youth Football and Chair Volunteer Toll Road Request. And do we have an idea of what times?
Uh, there's an email right here in the book. Looks like this, this year our toll road will be on September ninth during the townwide yard sale. So I guess they're doing it
Okay.
the same time as the townwide yard sale.
So September? September seventh.
Seventh, I'm sorry.
That's the seventh.
Yep, sorry.
So, and are we looking? We don't have any times?
I don't.
No. It's usually a few hours during the afternoon.
Say between late night and noon or something like that.
Yeah. I'm good with it, I think it's a great cause, it's always been good. Never had any issues. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, it's fine.
I would just, I just want to, I'm sure the chief doesn't know about this, but September seventh?
Yeah, I, someone sent me a
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure you're, you're aware, too.
Only stipulation I have is I don't want the kids in the road.
Yeah.
Right. Just the adults, kids gotta stand on the side.
Parents collecting the money.
Yeah.
Can you have a special attention out there, too, that day? Just, yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right, very good, I'm good with it, we're good with it.
All right, no, I'll, I'll make sure that they, that they, Karen responds back, no kids in the road.
Yep. And, all right, comments and concerns? Do you have any comments and concerns, sir?
I don't think I do.
No? Mr. Farrar?
Nope.
Anybody from the public? Comments and concerns?
Yeah, just a question.
Right?
So, giving the town administrator signature privileges for the warrants and bills, will the, will the warrants and bills still be part of the selectmen's meetings and expressed publicly?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, we're still gonna discuss them, still go through them. He's just signing, saying that they're correct.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions, any comments, concerns?
Probably help with the biweekly, too.
What is that?
Having, Jim having that ability when we go to biweekly payroll?
Yeah, when we go to biweekly, it's gonna be a lot better.
Yeah.
Because this is gonna be at least one less, one less warrant for payroll. So, and how's the turnout for that so far? As far as any, any conversations about, anybody upset about it?
No, I, I had a conversation with Jim a few weeks ago, right, Jim? I, I answered all his questions and I think it was, you know, legitimate questions that he had and I think we had a good conversation.
Saves the town a lot of money, saves a lot of
Manpower.
Manpower, hours, because it takes a lot to do it every week. So. And that's what every other place does. Most places are biweekly. And that, that would be the police department, too, right?
Yes.
So, did you have any issues with yours, Chief? All right. All right, any other comments, concerns? Anybody from Zoom in the public, comments, concerns? Are we on there?
I don't think so.
Other than Derek?
Yeah, if he's even still on.
All right.
Yeah.
So moving on, next meeting is August twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four, at six P M.
So are we having a meeting?
Well, that's, that's, that's a thing. You know, on the twenty ninth, I, I was made aware, I was made aware this week that Selectment Belize is, is gonna, is out of town.
Yeah.
He's not gonna be returning for the twenty ninth. And the twenty ninth, we were dedicating that to Tech Ton to have their, their presentation here. And Derek
He really should be here, yeah.
He would need to be here for that.
Yeah.
And so we, we were gonna move that to the, the nineteenth of September is when the next time Tech Ton would have availability to come out and make a full presentation. And as a matter of fact, they're, they're trying to get onto the agenda for the Conservation Commission for the eleventh. You know, Jeff was gonna reach out to Conservation to get on to the eleventh agenda. So that's why they were trying to also So that's why they were trying to also try to do the nineteenth.
Okay. So a regular meeting, we'd be doing September fifth then?
Right.
Yeah. So no meeting next week?
If we did bi-weekly?
Right.
Okay. So we're looking at September fifth then, if we don't need to meet the twenty-ninth?
Right. There is a, now that I, I, it just, it just came to me, I mean, we do have a potential appointment for the highway department for a new hire that could be coming for the board to fill a vacancy that has been on, out there on the twenty-ninth. Would it be possible to have a quick meeting to get that addressed so that the gentleman could potentially start on it?
You might have the planning board too.
Yeah, they're right.
The planning board hire too.
Right.
And then potentially a police officer hire, right?
Actually.
So there could be three hires right on that day.
Could we do just a quick one on, on that?
Or even in the afternoon or something or like?
Well, you know, there's going to be more that gets tied into there somehow too.
I, I can keep it, I can keep it short.
I, I'm okay with meeting the twenty-ninth, I have no problem with it at all.
I wouldn't mind a day off.
You've had days off.
Hey, look.
Come on now. You just get back to work.
What?
Um.
Easy.
So. It's up to you guys. I'm good with the twenty-ninth, you know, I have no problem with it, but if you guys want to hold off, but that's holding off potentially three employees from starting.
Okay.
And you're like
Yeah, just keep it
I'll keep it brief.
Short.
I'll keep it brief.
So next meeting will be August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Six P M, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. See, just when we thought we had it resolved, Jim throws another curve ball to us. All right. Your favorite part?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Rich A. Hocker, aye.
David Dufray, aye. We are adjourned.